I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, August 15th, 2016. I want to welcome everyone. Susan Humbert, Life Group Directors, Cumberland Community Church. You here? Oh, you're right there. Got her earlier, she get a good seat. 3110 Sports Avenue. She's here to give the invocation and also lead us in the pledge of flag. So, but everyone, please rise.
Let's pray. Our Father who art in heaven, your name is holy and hallowed. Father, we recognize you as our sovereign God, and we ask you to be an honored guest here at this meeting, Lord. Forgive us when sometimes we put our agendas in front of your own. Thank you that you are full of grace, that you walk alongside us in every aspect of our lives, but especially as leaders in this community, Father. We thank you for your guidance and your promptings and how you speak through and in this city and the city leaders. We specifically lift up this body of people here, this body of leaders. We pray for their spirits of humility, for wisdom, for integrity, for honesty, Lord, as they consider all things that they need to consider as they govern. Father, we pray for the city itself, that we would be a people who love our neighbor, and that we would model that first for our city. We ask you to be present, to lead, to guide, and to speak here in these minutes. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are new in town or likely to go to a really different kind of church, Alan Scott and the folks at it, Cumberland Christian are just a great group. They do so much for our Cumberland Community Church. They do so much for our community. Go out toward where the state even is, hang a right. Agenda changes, we have a couple of agenda changes. Actually, we have an item that's going to be added to the agenda. I'll ask Doug Stoner if he will make a motion to add an item for the purpose of adding item to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the rules for the purpose of that.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add an item on the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote or say aye, because it's not, it's approved. Seven, I get one more. Seven zero to add an item to the consent agenda. Now, Mr. Stoner, if you will make the motion to add your item to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to add to the consent agenda eight, to make it eight E, use of the council chambers on Thursday, August 25th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM for a meeting of the Vinings North Trail Neighborhood Association.
Okay, get a, ask a motion to add this to the consent agenda. Get a sec, get a motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Alright, so that'll be added to the consent agenda. And we have an item that's currently on the agenda. I'll ask Mr. Ron Finlay to be taken off the consent and placed on the formal business. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we remove from the consent agenda item number eight A, and the intent is to place it on formal business, which would be six E, as I read it.
Okay. All those in, you get a second on that?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second to move that from the consent to the, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. So, those are the changes that we have in the agenda, agenda changes. Is that correct? Okay. Under the mayor's report, we got a couple of things. The first one we got is 2016-321 JRM Management Check Presentation to the Smyrna Education Foundation. I see a guy with the check. That's the most important thing. Bill Watson, who is with JRM Management, and he's going to call up folks from the Smyrna Education Foundation. The thing I like to see is it's not one of these big old checks that you couldn't deposit it if you had to. I hope you got a small check. So, those are in the Education Foundation. Would y'all please step forward? Don't be afraid.
Mayor and council, Bill Watson with JRM Management. Thanks for having us up here. We partnered with the city in the Spring and Fall John Col Festival and the Taste of Smyrna as community events and being involved in many communities and understanding the benefit of a good education. We really like to support the Smyrna Education Foundation, and we have a check for $6,000 I'd like to give you guys.
Thank you so much.
All drinks at the Taste of Smyrna, which hopefully adds another thousand or two bucks to the cause, and we're just glad to be a part of this community.
That's a good deal. Thank you very much. Anything you want to say?
We absolutely could not do what we do in the schools without corporations like JRM. We have in our bylaws that we will not compete with PTAs nor with school foundations, so our policy of fundraising is very limited. So, without corporations and private citizens that maybe have their children out of the school system, we're at, our hands are tied. So, over the past four years, we've been able to put over $37,000 into the schools, and we certainly appreciate JRM and all they do for us.
Every year, they sort of belly up and give us a little money, so that's good. Anybody want to say? We can cash it today, or yet they can cash it, but thank you so much. That's great. We've got a sort of a brief presentation to make, and I'm going to ask that Mike Jones sort of kick this off. I just found out about it today. Has nothing to do with the elected officials. It has to do with some of our employees who want to recognize somebody that means a lot to their department, but also our community. And Mike, you want to take it and go?
I'd be honored to, Mayor. I was approached a little over a week ago by some of our police chief's officers, and in particular, NPO Lewis Defense took the lead on this. And I asked the chief to come here tonight and be here, and he kept asking me, why am I here tonight? And I said, I promise you, it's not career limiting, but I can't tell you. Well, back on July 24th, the Faith Christian Center partnered with the Smyrna Police Department, and they had a cops and clergy cookout. And what our officers noticed that were present there was the routine interaction that our police chief has with its citizens. And they were going through the photographs that were taken at that cookout, and they kept noticing this man who generally cares about his community, and it just, it came out. He had no idea they were taking pictures of him and didn't care. But when you go through these photographs and you start seeing this pattern over and over, it really hit them. And they took it upon themselves, and they came to me with this some time ago, this idea, and I thought it was fantastic. Well, they showed me the final version of that, and I hid it in Councilman Welch's office so no one could find it. No one on the council is aware of this to today. That's the only way I can keep a secret. But at this time, I would like our police chief, David Lee, to come forward along with the balance of the officers that are present for a presentation by our mayor and Derek Norton, the chairman of our Public Safety Commission.
Let's make that, you want to go to? I think David's embarrassed. I seen him, but his face turned red out there. Y'all come up here. Come up here and sit with the manager. Y'all come up here too.
And chief, this was prepared by your staff behind your back, because they obviously care an awful lot about you. I was very impressed by their actions.
That's pretty neat.
That's awesome.
We had nothing to do with it. We just sent the photo off.
You know, about three and a half years ago, the chief came here, and we come up with this idea that's been proven throughout the nation of community policing. And when we developed this goal, he went into it headlong. And when you see the leadership of the chief and what he does for the community, it's times 10 inside our doors. He really looks at us, he appreciates what we do, he loves on us. We're a big family as well. We treat our community like a family. This all comes from the chief, and I'm not doing that because I need a raise. But I'll tell you, it's good every once in a while to say, chief, thank you for doing what you do, and we appreciate that.
Usually, I'm not at a loss for words. You know, I greatly appreciate it. It means a lot coming from you. You know, I've had a good tenure here so far, and I plan to be here for quite a few more years too, but you know, this is our success, and I know, I say that all the time. You know, this is not me, this is the Smyrna Police Department family, but I greatly appreciate this, and this will be hung up in my office in pride, and I assure you. But thank you again, thank you all of you.
Thank you, guys, for serving.
We are very fortunate to have David Lee as our chief, and it's been probably a pretty rough three years, but he's a hardworking guy, and he's got his, we're just very lucky to have him, so. It's actually a pretty good picture. I'm not in any of them, so it's a good thing. Let's see, is that the last thing on the mayor's report? Good deal. Item four A, land issue zonings and annexation. A is a public hearing, 2015-125 zoning requests. Z15-003 rezoning of the subject property from R15 RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes, 1.31 acres, land lot 592, 1514 Hawthorne Avenue, Tully, Tully, Tully &amp; Tully, Inc. This zoning request was tabled from June 13th, 2016, planning a zone board meeting at the request of the staff. Mr., I know the applicant's here somewhere. The background, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer the background to Rusty. As you've mentioned, this has been tabled numerous times since original P&amp;Z board meeting was held back in March of 2015, and it's undergone several changes. And if I ask Rusty from Community Development, or is Ken coming? Ken's coming from Community Development, our director, to talk to you a bit about it.
Before he does that, I'm going to, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition too, would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Who said, did somebody say?
Yes.
Yes. But I can't hear you. If you want to speak, you need to be sworn in. Is that, yes. Anybody else needs to be sworn in, Scott? Anybody that's going to give any testimony, either for or against it?
Tell them we didn't speak.
This is for anybody that, even if you just think you want to speak and you don't want to speak, then I'd rather get everybody sworn in all at one time. Anybody, y'all come up.
Who'd rep?
Just this issue or all of them?
This is just for this one issue. Everybody can have a seat, have a seat. Bud, you can sit on the front row if you want to. Now, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor. We have really been talking about this case off and on pretty much for the last year. What it involves is a two-step procedure, one dealing with the cemetery and then one dealing with the zoning aspect. The cemetery issue is on its way to being settled and resolved, so now we've jumped to the rezoning aspect as a result of that. This did go to the Planning Commission, and it was ultimately approved with a five-zero vote. This is the location map. It is on Hawthorne Avenue. It's currently classified as a vacant site with a cemetery, and from a zoning standpoint, the cemetery will remain and two lots will be cut out facing Hawthorne, and so that's why the proposed use list it as two single-family homes. The existing and the future land use plan are both moderate, so there's no change there. This is the proposed site plan showing the two lots. Both of these are over 12,000 square feet. The cemetery, as you can see, will be parceled out on that. This is the limits of the cemetery. It has been surveyed. We have been provided with information regarding these boundaries, and at this time, staff is comfortable that those are indeed the appropriate boundaries. There is a proposed location for parking area for a cemetery. That tract of land ultimately will be owned by the city. But in addition to subdividing and creating these two lots, there's also some waivers associated with this. There'll be a decrease in the minimum front setback from 35 to 12 feet, decrease in the minimum side to that common property line from 10 feet to 5 feet, decrease in the rear on Lot Two from 30 to 10 feet. And these are the proposed building elevations. Obviously, there are two lots there, so two of these plans will be constructed. This is the subject property. You can see it is indeed vacant, and photos of the adjacent properties. My community development staff, as well as the Planning Commission, do recommend approval of this request from R15 to R12 conditional for the development of two single-family residences at a density of 1.52 units per acre. As we've started doing, we're not going to go through each standard condition word for word. We have summarized the ones that will be applicable here to do with composition of the homes and stormwater management, the utilities, the traffic improvements, debris, the tree ordinance, landscape plan, how to deal with common areas as well as their tree plan. Under the special conditions, which again specifically apply to this request, Lot One will have a 12-foot front setback, an interior side of five, the exterior side of 10, and the rear of 30. Lot Two will have a 12-foot front, five interior, 10 exterior, and 10-foot rear, which those were illustrated earlier. The driveway length needs to be a minimum of 22 feet. That is a common requirement that we've had going for several years now. The right-of-way along Hawthorne Avenue needs to be increased to 50 feet, and as such, a dedication of 5 feet on the applicant's side of Hawthorne would be required. The developer shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk with a 2-foot grass buffer strip along Hawthorne Avenue for the length of the development, and the sidewalk shall connect existing sidewalks on either end of the development. If there is a common detention facility for the two homes, the developer shall provide the protective covenants on all the lots, and those will be supplied to the city. If an above-ground detention facility is located near the public right-of-way, any visible portion of that wall shall be clad in either brick or stone. The final two requirements have to do with what has been specifically submitted on the request, that approval of this R12 classification is conditioned upon the development of property in substantial compliance with the site plans dated 6/30/2016, as well as the, they should be bound to the elevations that were shown that we actually received on June 30th, and any change to any of that must be obtained from the Director of Community Development. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this rezoning.
Listen, no which questions.
No, thank you for that information. That's a very good background. This is something that has been, and we've been talking about this for a long time, and I think the church that had been there, the church that is actually selling the property, that burned down, I mean, gosh, it must be almost 10 years ago that that church burned down, that this lot has been sitting fallow. So, I'm glad that we've gotten to this point in the conversation. Would the applicant like to come forward and talk anywhere about the project? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant in this rezoning request, and I think Mr. Suddith did an excellent job of summarizing the key points. And as was noted, this has been going on for quite some time, which is not necessarily a bad thing when you can, what we think, arrive at what is a real win-win and successful situation for a proposal for both the applicant and the community, and including the property owner, the church, which is trying to sell this property, which includes the cemetery. Once you have the property involved, the cemetery and the community trying to figure out how to put this together in a way that makes sense, it has been, it's not been a struggle, it's just been a time-consuming process as we went through the various issues and took the time to do that. So, we certainly appreciate your staff's patience, the council's patience as we went through that process, which I think did wonders for this project. It's almost embarrassing for me, I'm bringing forth a rezoning proposal for two lots, just two. I don't know if I've ever done as little as two lots, but be that as it may, this is a rezoning proposal to rezone this property to R12. And I would remind the council, this originally came forward as a proposal for RAD for five townhomes and a single-family home in conjunction with the cemetery. That proposal would have a homeowners association that would have been taking charge of taking care of the cemetery going forward in perpetuity. After many meetings with the community, we arrived at what's presented to you today, and that is simply two single-family homes, the cemetery and the proposed area for parking. Ultimately, if it's the council's decision going forward after this zoning hearing, the proposal would be made that those would be provided to the city with the community group providing for future maintenance and upkeep of the cemetery so that, again, you have a real community, public, and private partnership that will occur here to allow a cemetery to be properly taken care of. Right now, there's no perpetual fund, there's no perpetual maintenance. Going forward, that will allow for a proper resting place, for it to be given its historic significance, and a place that the community can be proud of, given its historical significance for this community. In addition, you also have the opportunity through this rezoning application for two single-family homes. You can see from the pictures that were of the surrounding area and the pictures of the proposed homes, that it's exactly in keeping with the type of single-family detached homes that have been recently constructed along Hawthorne Avenue and this greater community as along the street. While there have been other instances of certain particular pieces and properties being redeveloped for townhomes or other higher density in this particular area across the street and behind, you'll see that these are single-family homes. What is being proposed is exactly consistent with that, and I think that's, again, a testament to the community and testament to the applicant who have put in the time to say, this works for you, what works for me, and work that through and come forward with this application. The variances that are required for this application, if we could put up the site plan, if, I can hit the right button. Needs to flip up on the screen. Button I push. Ah, there we go. The site plan itself, the variances are necessary, as you can see, in order to create the two single-family lots and then therefore maintain the cemetery in its total form with the additional parking area, which is not there presently. Please understand, there is no access for anybody to really come on to the property to provide for access to the cemetery in order to provide all of that. You create two single-family lots, and by their shape, you can see the variances are necessary and needed for setback purposes, but don't take away from the overall community feel and street feel that Hawthorne Avenue presents. This site plan is made a part of the proposed rezoning if it's the desire of the council. All standard stipulations and special conditions have been agreed to and are agreeable to the applicant, which includes that the zoning will be subject to the site plans that you can see, that the cemetery that's been surveyed, the appropriate studies have been done, is set up to be appropriately dedicated at appropriate time. With that, we're here to answer any questions. Mr. Tulley is here, can answer any questions. I can answer any questions, and we would respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone that was sworn in that would like to give any testimony, please step forward, identify yourself, and make your comments.
I don't have my package. I got together a package before. I think all council members got it, like 60 pages, had a list of different stuff that, different questions and all about it. My main question is, the deed search, we had, I had certified copies of the deeds. It showed that the cemetery was not sold in 1953, and I didn't see any, any kind of a deed that was before that, so it probably looks like now, we're probably going to end up having to be in a Superior Court or somewhere for a deculatory injunction or something for it, get an official. And I don't have the descendants with me. I've had a stroke since then, so my health hasn't been where, I hadn't been able to be on top of it like I had been. But, and there had been, I had talked with Wilbon Associates who had done the, looking for graves outside of the cemetery, and he told me that he couldn't guarantee that he had hit rock before, and he didn't penetrate enough to find where there might be, that there could be graves outside of the cemetery itself. So, I mean, I don't know about all of that. But then they, the descendants that had access up on the right-hand side of the cemetery as it is now, they'd had that for years and years, and now they're taking that away from them, and y'all proposing putting it down in a city parking area down below it. Are y'all buying that parking area? Or is Telly and Telly going to donate that or for it to deal with that, the parking area?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. First of all, Bud, I'm very sorry to hear about your recent health problems, and I hope that you're able to have a strong recovery, because that's a lot to deal with. And I also wanted to note that I appreciate, you've been an ardent supporter of your end of Hawthorne Avenue and that Five Points area for many, many years, and that deserves recognition. You've done a good job. I want to clarify though, because I know you've had some questions and some concerns about the ownership and the deed of the cemetery, and Scott Cochran, the city attorney, has looked into that in great detail. And Scott, if you wouldn't mind, I know you might not have it in front of you, but just giving us a little bit of information on, because I know you, I feel extremely confident that we have 100% certainty of who owns the cemetery.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Yeah, it came through two separate deeds, but I think we're fine with the conveyance as proposed here. I think Kevin's looked at it also.
I mean, were they through quick claim deeds or warranty deeds, or do you know?
They were through both. Yeah, there's some quick claim deeds, some warranty deeds, but both are more effective to transfer the title.
Okay. Like I said, I mean, they just, we have to get it with descendants and see what they want to do, pursue it, if that's what they want to do. And there's no kind of buffer between the cemetery and the homes on the property line. And there's no kind of buffer between the cemetery and the homes on the property line. I mean, there's like 10-foot right there maybe, but, I mean, are they going to have a driveway there, or does that mean that if there are graves back there, they can't come in and put a storage building on top of where they might be?
No, 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 no. Yeah, nothing, nothing will be able to be built on top of, on top of any grave.
It'd be a tough place for me to live.
Oh, me, me too.
I'm just saying, but I'm not trying to discourage anybody from buying a house there.
Thank you, Eric, for letting me know.
Thanks, Bud.
Thank you, Bud. And Bud's lived here forever. He and I actually went to school together, and he's got, he's got just a wealth of information about things that happened years ago that, some's documented, some's not, so, but, okay. Anyone else that was sworn in that liked to make any comment? If you'll just please come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening, I'm Keith Bentley. I'm president of the Williams Park Neighborhood Association. And the neighborhood, of course, has been involved mainly with Ron Davis being our point person on this and all the discussions. Sorry. All right. From the beginning, and I've been in all these meetings, and one of the things, of course, that we are very supportive of this project as proposed, and it's kind of evolved, and we appreciate the developer working with us. Developers are not always real flexible when they're dealing with the neighborhood, they have their plan and they kind of want to stick to it. But we were able to work this out, and we think it's a win-win. That cemetery now, of course, is kind of overgrown and dilapidated, and we'd like to see that preserved and be an asset to the neighborhood as well as the city. And the new homes there also improve that area of development for the neighborhood. So we think for the city, for the descendants of the people that are buried in that cemetery, and for the neighborhood, it's kind of win-win-win. So we just wanted to express our support for it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Ron Davis, Roswell Street, Smyrna. It's all been said, I think, but I wanted to particularly comment on Rick Thule. We've worked, as you, most of you know, with a lot of developers over the last 25 years, and he's been a pleasure to work with. He came in with the original proposal, as Kevin mentioned, and he came to me for some reason to see what I thought about it as a resident over there, and I told him it won't fly. I can't support it, I don't think my neighbors will, nor do I believe the council will. Can't speak for any of those but myself, but, and he went home and came back with the proposal that's before you tonight, and it would have taken most developers two years and 15 iterations to go down that far. He's a good man, and I really believe this from the bottom of my heart with all the meetings I've had with him, that what he's presenting here tonight is not just for profit. It's for that, make no mistake, but it's also to do something good for the city of Smyrna. And I believe that is very, very strongly. So to Rick Thule, I salute you, and I hope you come back many times to deal with the city of Smyrna for developments. Thank you.
Anyone else that was sworn in, like to make any comment? Kevin, you got anything else you want to bring up?
I just wanted to ask a question. Is there going to be some kind of fencing to fence off the cemetery from the development?
There will, you saw in the picture, there was a retaining, a small retaining wall, that's being replaced, refaced essentially to make it look extremely attractive. There'll be some fencing and things. He's going to do some things, obviously, to separate that out so that it can be done, it can be attractive and appeal to homeowners.
Yeah, my stance on this is that this is absolutely a very good example of the market working to ensure that what's right is done, because, you know, Mr. Thule wants to sell these homes, and if this is going to be, you know, these homes are going to back up to the cemetery, it is in his best interest to make sure that that wall looks as nice as possible and is commensurate with the quality of the homes that he's going to be building on these lots.
One other question. At one point, they were talking about bringing in somebody to determine if all the graves were where they said they were and so on and so forth, because it hasn't been used as a cemetery in quite a while. Was that done?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, that's been done, and all the, they go through a very specific process to determine those locations, and those experts have been brought in and have done that completely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Certainly, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. Yeah, and I'll say, going back to what Mr. Davis said when he was giving his input on this, when I, he's a more charitable soul than I am, because when I initially saw the first iteration that was proposed, I laughed, I was like, there's no way this is getting anywhere. And again, to Mr. Thule's credit, he, this, he truly, truly did work with me, work with staff, work with the neighborhood, and not just the Williams Park neighborhood, but he worked with many descendants of people who are buried in that cemetery, he worked, you know, he, we've, this has been a big, ongoing conversation that has led to us being here tonight, and I really appreciate the patience and the diligence of everyone who contributed to get us to this point. You know, Mr. McCulloch gave us a lot of historic information, we had meetings with descendants, and fortunately, Deacon Bedford with the Greater Design Church was not able to, he's not able to be here tonight, but he's been involved in all the conversations leading up to this process. It was actually brought to my attention a few years ago by Betty Williams, who is a resident in the Rose Garden community, and she's also on the board of Keep Smyrna Beautiful. And she had been working with Keep Smyrna Beautiful and Ann Kirk, trying to find a way to bring the Rose Garden Association and other folks to be able to come on to the site to do cemetery cleanup. And there were a couple of problems with that. One, the cleanup necessary is way beyond what a group of well-meaning individuals alone can accomplish. It's going to require, it's going to require some more equipment than they had at their disposal. Second of all, it was private property, and so we couldn't, we certainly couldn't give any organization our blessing to go on that property, because it was private property, and so as a city, we can't, we can't do that. So we started thinking of ways that we could preserve this cemetery. I think that this is an ideal solution, because not only are we going to preserve this cemetery, because I feel the ultimate goal is, again, we talk a lot in Smyrna about historic preservation, and this is truly a way for us to demonstrate our commitment to historic preservation. So I think that's important. It also demonstrates our commitment to a very important part of Smyrna's history and to a part of our community with the Rose Garden and Davenport Town Communities. If you look through at those headstones, which I hope everyone will be able to take the time to do that when this is complete, the names on the tube stones are, it's Reverend Davenport, it's his descendants, it's people who really were critical to Smyrna's history. And so we're doing the right thing, this is resulting in what's going to be the right thing to preserve that cemetery. The second thing this is going to do is really Hawthorne Avenue is an area of, in Ward 3, that I have very high hopes for, and that the city frankly has a lot of hopes for. In fact, we're putting a traffic circle in as part of the SPOS program at the other end of Hawthorne Circle near the Five Points area, partly in, one, because it's, that intersection was made for a traffic circle, and it'll be much more easier to get through there, and also because that's going to be a way to, again, improve the aesthetics of an area that has had a lot of development around it, but we're trying to really encourage more redevelopment in that immediate vicinity. This is going to have a halo effect, putting these two houses there. I've been in contact with the residents who are immediately next door to this property, they are very supportive of this. I honestly don't think that having the cemetery there is going to be a hindrance to marketing. I like cemeteries, I'm a cemetery person, I'm from New Orleans, that's just how we are. But I think this is going to be a neat project, and I am very happy to support this tonight. So at this time, I do want to go ahead and move to approve item 4A, which is 2015-125, the public hearing for zoning request Z15-003. Rezoning of the subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes. It's a 1.31 acre tract landlot 592, 1514 Hawthorne Avenue. The applicant is Thule &amp; Thule Incorporated, and the zoning request was tabled from the June 13, 2016 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of staff.
Second. I have motion second to approve this zoning request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, motion please vote. Do you want? Prove seven to zero. We did vote, right? Next item on the agenda is item 4B. 2016, 263 Public Hearing, zoning request Z16-010, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes, 0.479 acre landlot 451, 1,000 McLendon Avenue. The McLendon Group LLC is the applicant. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this is an existing lot that sits on the corner of McLendon and Evelyn Street, and the proposal is to take an existing R15 lot and split it into two, creating two RAD conditional lots. One of the homes would front Evelyn Street, one would front McLendon Avenue, and our community development staff is here, I believe Rusty has this one, if you have any particular questions.
I think the applicant is here somewhere, is that correct? Okay. I'll ask, before we do this, this is a public hearing, is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this rezoning request? Even if, okay, anyone that just thinks they want to speak, I'd like to get everybody sworn in all at one time. So if you'll come forward, you don't have to speak, but I'd like to get everybody sworn in, so. There you go. Anybody just thinking they might want to speak? There you go. Okay, if y'all have a seat, then this is in, Mr. Nellwich, is that correct? I'm going to let Rusty do the present, okay?
Good evening. This zoning case was heard by the Plan Zoning Board at the last meeting on July 11, and it was recommended for approval by a vote of 5-0. As Mr. Jones stated, this is at the intersection, the southeast, the corner of the intersection of McLendon and Evelyn Street. The applicant is proposing to split the half-acre site into two new residential lots. The rezoning request is from R15 to RAD conditional. The land use for the area is moderate-density residential, which is a density allowance between three units per acre and 4.5 units per acre. The proposed density for the site is 4.2 units per acre, so no land use change is required for this zoning. This is the proposed site plan for the development. They're proposing a five-foot right-of-way dedication along McLendon and Evelyn Street to get that right-of-way closer to the 50-foot right-of-way requirement. The applicant is also requesting a front setback reduction from 35 feet down to 20 feet. It is a similar variance request that we have granted elsewhere on McLendon Avenue. He is also requesting a side setback reduction from 23 feet down to 15 feet on that lot that abuts Evelyn. Also, he's looking to reduce the side setbacks from 10 feet down to seven and a half feet. And the rear setback will remain 30 feet per the zoning ordinance. Here are the proposed elevations, the top home will be the home that'll face McLendon, and then the bottom home will be the home that is on the corner of Evelyn and McLendon. It'll have a side entry garage. Here's the pictures of the subject property. These are adjacent properties, give you a little context as to what the neighborhood looks like. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R15 RAD conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 4.2 units per acre with the following conditions. As is stated before, the standard conditions regarding composition of the home, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, and burying debris, as well as applying the tree ordinance, landscape plans, and landscaping requirements will apply to this zoning. We do have some special conditions. Those conditions are, the development of the site shall maintain the following setbacks, a front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of seven and a half, a street side of 15, a rear of 30, and the next condition requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet from building face to back a sidewalk. The next condition requires a five-foot sidewalk with two-foot grass buffer be constructed on McLendon Avenue as well as Evelyn Street. Also, all new water and sewer caps shall be bored, we just paved those streets a year or two ago. Next, there should be a minimum 50-foot right-of-way along, I'm sorry, there should be a minimum 50-foot between the street edge on McLendon to the nearest edge of the driveway apron on McLendon Avenue, or Evelyn Street, I'm sorry. If the minimum distance of 15, 50 feet cannot be provided, a driveway turnaround should be provided. That way, we have the cars pulling out onto Evelyn as opposed to backing out on that side entry. And next condition is basically the tying the site plan for the rezoning request to the approval of the request. And finally, the last condition ties the elevations that you saw to this request. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Martin? If the applicant is here, if you please step forward.
Evening, Sean Murphy, 3282 Lee Street.
Martha McNeesh, 2932 Cotsford Way.
And we're two of the partners of the McLendon Group, the third could not be here tonight. You all know me, and you know what we've done in the past, the McLendon Group also did a project just down the street from this development. I formerly lived on this street, and now I live in Forest Hills. This basically is just another opportunity in my mind for how we could change our neighborhood from where it used to be mostly rentals to owner-occupied. This was a house that came up for sale, I happened to be walking by the day the guy was putting the sign in the yard, and I knew that if I didn't get it, somebody would just get it and turn it into another rental. It's been a rental for 10 or 15 years at least. And as you know, if you've been down our street in the last year or two, there's been a major change, primarily due to the things that our group and another group have done in our neighborhood, and we've gone to being 70% rental to about 50% rental just in the last year. We have about nine new homes on three streets now. So this is our hope to just continue what we've already done, and with that, I'm going to keep it short tonight, because I think you all probably want to get home early, and we accept all of staff's conditions and terms as they've been stated. Thank you.
Any questions, because if you haven't been on that area, it's just, it's unbelievable with what they're doing, and it's really a plus for everything, it's going to have a great halo effect, I think, on that area, so. Anybody have any questions?
I just want to commend the strategy for the future of Smyrna that you're pursuing, and thank you for what you've done to improve that area already.
Anyone that, y'all can have a seat, anyone else that was sworn in that liked to make any comment, please come forward and tell us who you are and where you live, and anything that you'd like to say.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening. My name is Rob Jackson, 995 McLendon Avenue, directly adjacent to that house. It's kind of interesting to see my house put up there, top left is one of the properties compared. What the developers have done for the neighborhood of Smyrna Heights is actually kind of amazing. Me and my wife bought back in 2007. You guys can tell that 2007, 2008, we wound upside down in our neighborhood. It is gratifying to watch the neighborhood evolve and turn back around into what Sean talked about, being a less rental-oriented property to homeownership. And I just, like you said, he's done a fantastic job with the community, with Smyrna Heights, and I hope this continues to be the evolution of my neighborhood, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. Vanessa Richardson at 1151 McLendon Avenue. My husband and I bought our home about two years ago, and what drew us there were some of the developments that were going on and walking distance into town. It's Smyrna Heights, we have great hope in Ward 3, for the same area, for Smyrna Heights area, and love to see what the developers are doing. to see what the developers are doing. I think some of the comments that are made around the neighborhood are privacy and concerns about how close some of the new developments are being spaced, excuse me, together. I don't have any trouble with the plans this evening, just since the McLendon Group is here, putting it out there. But thanks very much for the opportunity to speak tonight and for considering this development.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Nolowich.
Yeah, this is definitely, I tell you, this is a, if y'all pay attention to a lot of these meetings, it is not normally this warm, fuzzy between the community and developers and projects, especially where RAD conditional is involved. So this is just a treat tonight. You know, the McLendon Group is another one of those, is another one of those developers where, I mean, obviously, real estate development is not a, it's not motivated by a lack of profit. A desire for profit is there, but this is another example tonight of a developer who also has a true altruistic streak in truly wanting to improve their community. And in this case, the community in which, you know, they live in their area, and you know, the kids who live in this neighborhood go to school with their kids from Forest Hills. I mean, this really is a remarkable thing. And I also wanted to note that I do think that now a lot of the development that we're seeing back here, too, it's a result of a vision of people, of residents in Smyrna Heights, and of people like the McLendon Group. And also, I think it's, we're seeing the result of the halo effect of the Concord Road widening finally being finished. That Linear Park is going in place. You know, we had the new restaurant that's gonna be going in that was on the agenda a few meetings ago. There's a lot happening in Smyrna Heights and in this part of Ward Three. And so I am very happy tonight to move to approve item 4B, which is 2016-263. This was the public hearing for zoning request Z16-010. It's a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes. It's a 0.479 acre tract landlot 451. The address is 1,000 McLendon Avenue, and the applicant is the McLendon Group LLC.
Second.
I have motion second to approve this rezoning request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank y'all very much. The next item on land issues, zonings, and annexations is item C, which is a public hearing rezoning request from GC to GC conditional for a new Wendy's restaurant, 0.56 acre landlot, 880, 2808 Spring Road, Windmere Management Company. The background, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, this property is currently a Wendy's, and when we're done with this tonight, it'll still be a Wendy's, but it'll be a new Wendy's under their new style. Their intention is to demo the existing facility and rebuild a Wendy's restaurant in that new style. There is some replacement of some of the parking, and this is coming back before mayor and council because of the number of variances that would be required in order to accomplish what it is they're wanting to do. So rather than go through a number of variances, they're bringing it back before council to get a rezoning of GC conditional, and will bind the property to a specific site plan. And Rusty will be here if you have any questions.
Is the applicant here? Yes, they're turning. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to, is in opposition to or would like to make any public comment concerning this request for rezoning from GC to GC conditional? Okay, this is in Derek Norton's district, and I'm sure he's gonna turn it over to Rusty for his presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Jones pretty much summed it up pretty well. This is not a rezoning request to change the use of the property. It's merely to address zoning issues and tied to a specific site plan to address seven variances. The property is zoned GC. It has a future land use and neighborhood activity center. None of that is gonna change with this rezoning request. It'll remain the same. It's basically at the outskirts of the city limits. As you guys remember, we annexed this property approximately a year and a half ago. This is a survey of the existing property today. As you can see, the building's pushed back towards the rear of the property. All the parking is between the building and the front property line. And then there's a drive-through lane and a pass-through lane that allows you to get around the building on the back. The new proposed plan centers that building in the middle of the site. It provides parking along the road as well as the rear of the property, eliminating some parking conflicts with the drive-through lane, as well as providing a median to restrict access from that western, that western access drive that allows people to go straight into the drive-through. They'll no longer be able to do that. They'll be able to turn in. They'll have to go around the building and then queue up in the line like they're supposed to. Some of the requested variances, the first one is an accessory structure in the side yard. That's for the menu board and overhang with, associated with that menu board. The next is a second accessory structure. The third is a parking reduction from 36 spaces to 26 spaces. A side setback reduction from 35 feet to 28 feet. A rear setback reduction from 100 feet to 33 feet. This is a requirement from the corridor design district. Basically, all the redevelopment along Spring Road requires this variance. And finally, it's a reduction in the required parking lot trees. The ordinance requires a tree located near 50 feet within each parking space. As you can see, there's no landscape island or tree island in that parking space, in that area. This is the new proposed building elevations. Pictures of the subject property today, as you can see, it's an older model Wendy's. And then these are the pictures of the adjacent properties, Nally, Applebee's, and then the Marathon Gas Station. Community Development recommends approval from GC to GC conditional for the new Wendy's restaurant with the following conditions. The composition of the commercial building and development shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to bricks, stone, and stucco. All utilities within the development shall be underground. The developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. No debris may be buried on any lot or common area. The developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Next, all landscape plans must be prepared and stamped and signed by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. Next, the dumpsters shall be enclosed with a minimum six-foot-high enclosure consistent with the architecture and style and composition of the main commercial building. Next, the applicant shall comply with the city's current sign ordinance. Next, the development shall coordinate the landscape plan and sidewalk plan with the Spring Road improvement project. Next, the proposed crosswalk shall either be brick pavers or stamped concrete. Next, approval of the rezoning to the subject property shall be in substantial conformance to the site plan submitted. And finally, the architectural style, composition, treatment of the building shall be in substantial compliance to the renderings and elevations submitted with the rezoning application. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions? Okay. The applicant, if you'd like to step forward.
My name is Joel Larkin. I'm with Sam's Larkin Huff &amp; Valley, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'm just trying to think of something clever to say. We went from a win-win to a Wendy's, but it wasn't working for me. But Mr. Jones and Rusty, they pretty much said everything. I mean, the key to this is they're redeveloping the Wendy's around town and throughout the country, and as they do so, they're trying to address problems and situations. And the big one here is the drive-through. Currently, the way it's configured, you know, it backs up into Spring Road, and by moving the building like this, it also blocks a lot of the parking that's there. So they've moved it like you see with a lot of fast food, where you're forcing people to go around the building, and that not only keeps people out of the Spring Road, but it keeps them from blocking the parking. So it's gonna work a lot better. They're also making it much more pedestrian-friendly. So, happy to respond to any questions you have.
Norton, yeah.
Do you have any restaurants? I know one of your competitors at lunch has a double lane, you know, and they're working that. Do you have any restaurants that do that?
Well, I'm actually an attorney, and I don't have any restaurants at all. But I'm not, I'm not aware of any Wendy's that have that. I know Chick-fil-A is doing it, and McDonald's is doing it a lot.
Well, I mean, yeah, they do it, but, I mean, and it really speeds up the process. But it's only for lunch, for that short period of time where they're really moving traffic in and out. But I was just curious if that's something indigenous to their restaurant or what? Because that drive-through lane is a nightmare.
Well, I think Wendy's is aware of that, and they're trying to address that. I don't think they would have room to do that here. That requires a bigger piece. And frankly, it just confuses me when I get, I was in Chick-fil-A this morning, and, you know, people are like, "Is it my turn or is it your turn?"
Any questions?
I just want to make a comment. Mr. Larkin, as you finish this process, just please send our best wishes back to Garvis. We've missed him for his challenges he's undergone over the last many months.
I appreciate that. No, you do, and he's doing great, I'll tell you that. And I think you're gonna be seeing him very soon again.
Any other questions?
I do. Can I ask Rusty a question? I notice in reducing the parking spaces, we took probably a third of the spaces away. Is that, I mean, we did that one time before based on the thought process that a lot of this business was gonna be drive-through. Was that their contention?
Yeah, and I'd have to check to see specifically how many existing spaces we took. It's not quite as mu, it's not quite, I don't think they were meeting the requirement as is right now. So I don't think the reduction is as impactful as it may appear according to the variance request.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, we talked earlier, Wendy's folks are like Chick-fil-A and the Burger Kings and the McDonald's, and I don't think they're gonna propose anything that's gonna hurt them by eliminating parking places or not having a double drive-through. A lot of times, they just have to get out, and they'll bring your food to you.
And actually, what they experienced here was the way the drive-through was malfunctioning. It was actually blocking more than half of the spaces and making them unusable. So they see it as a gain in parking.
Right, good deal. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I think anybody else signed up for public comments, so, Mr. Norton?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate y'all investing in the community, tearing down an old facility, a new one, making it, making it better-looking, a fresh look in that area is great, easier to get around in. I'm all for it, and I appreciate that. If there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4C. This is a public hearing, zoning request Z16-011, rezoning from GC to GC conditional for a new Wendy's restaurant, 0.56 acres, landlot 880, 2808 Spring Road, Windmar Management Company.
Second.
Motion second to approve this rezoning request. Any other discussions? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Item D is 2016-334, public hearing, zoning request Z16-013, modifications to currently approved site plan and building elevations, 1.9 acres, landlot 490, southeast corner of the intersection of Wendy Hill Road and Belmont Place, Alpern Enterprise. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, the request before you is regarding a very small area of what we refer to as the former Belmont Hill Shopping Center, Belmont Place. There, the property is divided into six pods, A through F, and specifically, this is a piece of Pod A. There are three issues that are germane to this. One is the elimination of the requirement for an 1,800-square-foot commercial retail facility, and instead, they want to build a two-story, 31,600-square-foot medical office building. And the second one is approval of modification of the building elevation. This is for the new renderings for the medical office building. And the third thing is approval of new sign monument. The way this was originally rezoned back in 2009, it required any major revisions to come back before mayor and council, and that's occurred on three other occasions, most recently back in February 2014. So this would be number four for your consideration. And Community Development is here and been working extensively with Halpern on this particular issue.
The applicant is here, I see. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to that would like to make any public comment concerning this change? The record show there is none. This is in Ms. Nolowich, is that correct? Okay, okay. It's amazing, attorneys don't have to be sworn in, but everybody else does. Ms. Nolowich. Rusty.
Rusty.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Jones gave a great summary. I'm gonna add some additional background information to this case. Let's skip through this. Back in 2008, the subject property was zoned to a site plan, a specific site plan. As you can see, this is that site plan and the building elevations that were approved for that area. Specifically, the area that we were talking about is highlighted in blue here. It reflect, the overall Pod A reflected approximately 48,000 square feet of commercials/retail space. Within this Phase Two, the area that's highlighted, they had planned approximately 18,000 square feet of retail, and that was across four different buildings. Here's the proposed master plan today. And if we go back through the whole process, Pod A was approved for 48,000 square feet of commercial retail. Approximately 30,000 has been built and is standing out there today. We're getting tenants in there, and they're working on moving in. The open space has been developed. It's in. Just the area where this request is being sought is only undeveloped area in Pod A. Pod B was approved for 164 independent senior housing units and 15,000 square feet of commercial retail. This pod is currently undeveloped. It's just got the monument sign out there. Pods C and D were combined back in 2014. They were approved for 156 single-family detached units. They're out there building away as fast as they possibly can at this point. Pod E was approved for the new elementary school. As you can see, it's out there, it's built, it's operating. And Pod F was done back in 2012. They got approved back in 2012 for 274 multifamily units. That project is complete. We have issued all COs. They're fully operating. So now that you got an idea of where we're at with respect to this, here's the proposed site plan that Halpern has presented. Their request is basically to modify the undeveloped section of Phase Two of Pod A. The applicant is proposing to eliminate the 18,000 square feet of retail space and is proposing a two-story, 31,000-square-foot medical office building. In addition, they're requesting to modify the building plans and elevations from the retail buildings to this, to this medical office building, and I'll show you that in the next slide. And finally, they're requesting a new 60-square-foot monument sign that'll advertise the tenants for this building. That monument sign is located right there in the corner, in the northeast corner of the property. This is the proposed building elevation. This is the elevation you'll see from Wendy Hill and Belmont Place at the light. This elevation was taken to the Urban Design Commission last Thursday. They recommended mayor and council approve this zoning with this elevation. This is a rendering of the proposed monument sign. It's in keeping and in line with the other monument sign for the development. other monument sign for, for the development. Here's the picture of the subject property. And basically, this is from the four corners of the, of the subject property. So you got an idea of what it looks like. And these are the adjacent properties across Belmont Place and Wendy Hill and adjoining retail buildings. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed zoning amendment with the following conditions carried over from rezoning cases Z-086, Z-125, Z-137, and Z-146, with several additional conditions added. The conditions in black are already the established conditions that have been carried over from the zoning cases. And these stipulations that we've added in red are, are the new stipulations that are, will run with this rezoning request, or this zoning amendment request. Basically, the first condition is the approval of zoning amendment and the development of Pod A shall be in substantial conformity to the site plan submitted with the zoning application. And number two, the approval of the zoning amendment and building elevations for the medical office building in Pod A shall be in substantial conformity to the building elevation submitted with the, with the zoning request. And finally, the applicant shall be allowed a second monument sign along Wendy Hill Road with a maximum sign area of 60 square feet and a maximum height of 12 feet. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Norton? Mr. West, please. Applicant.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. Well, I was just curious if you could tell us about the parking with the increased size of the building and how that is all been worked out. Thank you.
I, I think Mr. S, or Mr. West can answer that question. They'll have ample parking between the two sites. So I'm sure there may be a, a parking agreement established between them.
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight representing Alpern Enterprises. I've been there 27 years. So I had the pleasure of working in Smyrna all of that time. To, to address your question real quick, there is 120 parking spaces on that site, not to mention the spaces that are on the adjacent retail side. And those will be a shared parking, parking field for all of the use of the, both the restaurant tenants and the medical tenants. One of the reasons that drove us to this, this change in development is that the, about half of the retail space that we built on, on Pod A is restaurants, sit-down restaurant locations that need a lot more parking. And, and one of the things that they also need is daytime population, which is, is one of the areas where we go in our development and generally in, in the downtown Smyrna area. And so by, by moving to a medical office use, we'll have a lot of daytown, daytime workers that'll be there and their customers who will be a good mix for the restaurant center next door. The, the restaurants are primarily busiest at dinnertime and evenings. The medical office is busy during the day, so it makes an optimum shared parking scenario. So we're, we're very excited about it. We have a strong interest from a hospital group that would be taking the entire first floor of the building. So we're very excited about that, given that we haven't done anything yet. And we, we already have that strong of interest. I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Mr. Steve, are you still going to have a senior component to that whole area or no?
That remains the plan. We're, we're not in the residential development business, and so we're, we're marketing that Pod B site for that use. It was one that we, we thought, we thought and we still think would be a great use of that property. So far, we haven't found anybody in that business that, that agrees with that yet. But we, we do feel like the market is moving in that direction. Certainly, the residential market in all, all areas seems to be strengthening. And in particular, Smyrna is, is doing as well as anywhere. So.
I'll tell you what, your houses have gone fast, haven't they?
We're very excited about that. And that's no credit to us. That's, we, we, we found a good partner in David Weekly Homes, and they've done a tremendous job there.
Any questions? Thank you, Steve. Ms. Nolowich?
Yes, you know, it's, it's, Mr. West mentioned that there is a, I guess they have, you know, the, a tenant in mind, and it's a hospital group. I think that it was a big blow to Smyrna when Emory Adventist Hospital closed a couple of years ago. And now, of course, we've seen a little bit of a change there. I think Emory is now investing, I think, $34 million and, $34 million into Emory. It's going to be called Emory University Hospital, Smyrna, right outside the study limits. Well, Star is building a big health park. I think we were worried about not having enough access to convenient medical care. And I think that we are now going to have a lot of access to medical care in Smyrna. And I, and I'm, I'm very glad of that. And I think that this is a good, I think this will be a good addition to the Belmont development for, for that reason and also for the reasons that Mr. West cited. There, there, there's just a good synergy between that and the other retail and restaurants that are there in that site. So I am happy to, to support this tonight. I do want to go ahead and move to approve item 4D, which is the zoning request, 2016-334. This is the public hearing for a zoning request Z-16-013, modification to currently approved site plan and building elevations. It's a 1.9 acre tract, landlot 490, southeast corner of the intersection of Wendy Hill Road and Belmont Place. The applicant is Alpern Enterprises Incorporated.
Second.
Motion second to approve this, this zoning change. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Thank you very much. Item five is, oops, stand by here. Is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. A, 2016-326, approval of reappointment of Ward Three Representative Robin Phillips to the Smyrna Tree Board. This is a four-year term that expires August of 2020. Ms. Nolowich?
Yes, Ms. Phillips has been a wonderful representative of Ward Three on the Tree Board. And at this time, I would like to move to reapprove her. It's item 6A, 2016-326, approval of the reappointment of Ward Three Representative Robin Phillips to the Smyrna Tree Board. This is a four-year term to expire in August of 2020.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0. Item 6B, 2016-340, approval of reappointment to Award Four Representative Jan Campbell to the Smyrna Tree Board. This is a four-year term to expire August of 2020. Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say when I, when I called Jen on the phone the other day, I asked her if she'd be interested. And she said she enjoyed this job. And anytime you can get a volunteer that says they enjoy doing something, I'm very happy to reappoint Ms. Jan Campbell. I'll make that in form of a motion to approve the reappointment of Ward Four Representative Jan Campbell to the Smyrna Tree Board, four-year term to expire August 2020.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item 6C, under formal business, 2016-319, approval of consulting contract with the Seismore Group to conduct a land use and transportation study of Spring Road from Cobb Parkway to Atlanta Road. Mr. Jones, you want to give us the background on that, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor, the, the mayor and council took action on December 7th of 2015 when they authorized Community Development Department to submit an application to ARC for an LCI grant, Livable Centers Initiative Grant. And that application was submitted, and we found out in February of this year that the city was going to be awarded $100,000 toward that, toward that grant. The mayor and council took apps, action on April 18th to accept the grant, and our Community Development Department went forward with an RFQ. The Seismore Group was selected by that group to study the area on Spring Road, the Spring Road corridor from Cobb Parkway back to Atlanta Road. The grant required a match of 25%. So you take the $100,000 grant, the 25% that has been programmed into this year's budget of $25,000, and you arrive at the, the total study cost of $125,000. The action that you'll take tonight's impact on the budget is the approved $25,000.
This is Mr. Derek Norton.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Jones said, this, this was something we already approved in April, and the Seismore Group was the best bid for this project. At this point, I'd like to move to approve item 6C, 2016-319, approval of a consulting contract with the Seismore Group to conduct a land use and transportation study of Spring Road from Cobb Parkway to Atlanta Road.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item 6D, under formal business, is approval of, is 2016-325, approval to enter into agreement with the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police for reimbursement grant in the amount of $20,000 to be used for purchase of vehicle laptop computers. Mr. Jones, the quick background on that, please.
Yes, sir. The, earlier this year, the Georgia Association Police Chief contacted our police chief and made him aware of $20,000 that was available in a reimbursement grant specifically to be used for purchasing vehicle laptop computers. Currently, when we have an accident, we print and mail copies to the Georgia Electronic Accident Reporting Center. These computers will be used to make those electronic, and we can send them straight to, the acronym is GIRS, for immediate availability. And they'll be in a small reimbursement fee that comes back to the city of Smyrna. Smyrna residents that happen to be involved in any sort of accidents, that won't change. They can come to the police station and retain, obtain a free crash report by coming to police headquarters. This recommendation is for approval by the chiefs, police chief and staff for $20,000 reimbursement grant. There is no match associated with this grant.
Mr. Derek Norton, who chairs the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Norton?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty straightforward. If there are no other questions or, or comment, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6D, 2016-325, approval to enter into agreement with the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police for reimbursement grant in the amount of $20,000 to be used for the purchase of in-vehicle laptop computers.
Motion second. Any discussion? I forgot. About me, yeah. Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. I think item.
E.
6E is next, and that's the approval of the updated purchasing policy, correct? Mr. Jones, the background then. Let Mr. Fennell take care of that.
Mayor, this was previously on the consent agenda, but it's been moved to formal business. The, the, the meat of the policy that was presented to mayor and council on Thursday has not changed. But what we would like is to honor the will of the council and strengthen the, the language regarding the, the local purchase effort. Obviously, our city residents and business owners pay city taxes, and the effort to take that dollars that is paid into the city and reinvested in the city should be the first stop when we go to spend those, those monies. The purchasing policy that we have in place was last updated in 2011. However, the thresholds that are in place have not been updated in over 20 years. Amy is here, I believe, and Penny, I think, saw earlier. If you have specific questions about the policy that we discussed on Thursday, they are here for your questions.
Mr. Ron Fennell. Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think that's good background. I want to commend the work that both Penny and her team and Amy Schneider have done to bring us up to speed with both upgrading some of the nuances around purchasing policy, trying to make sure we are at least in the middle of the pack on our competitive set on how we deal with thresholds and some of the actions that we take. And I think the point that the administrator is making is a good one, and that is where possible, we create an opportunity for local businesses and local vendors to have a really good shot at getting business when we're purchasing items. Try to dissuade the purchase online of items just because it's convenient and give an opportunity for our local vendors, price-wise, to compete as well. So with that in mind, I move approval of the updated purchasing policy with the caveat that the mayor provides his eyes before it's signed to assure that that clause is included. Sufficient, Mr. Attorney?
And motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6 to 1 with Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Okay. Anything you want to say about Amy? She's, you want to wait until after the meeting? You want to wait?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is that correct? Mr. Jones, you please read the consent agenda for council's approval.
Mayor and council, before you, now on the consent agenda, there are five items. The first of those, item A is approval of your August 1st mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is approval of the Germa inter-local governmental contract revisions and allowance to authorize the mayor to execute those related documents that deals with our, our insurance. Item C is award of RFQ 17-004. This is the thermoplastic striping. And if you've been anywhere in the city and you see the crosswalks and they're not exactly beautiful, this will rectify that. So it's a big package. There'll be a lot of streets involved in that, in that bid. Award RFQ 17-003 is item D, and that is the purchase of a 2016 Ford Edge to the most responsive responsible bidder, which was Wade Ford, $24,660. And finally, is, was added earlier today that the use of council chambers for homeowner association meeting and Councilman Stoner's ward on August 25th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. And I don't think I mentioned commercial building permits, but we don't, we do not have any. Item nine is committee reports. Start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennell. We'll start with him tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend the staff and the team and all of the city for the birthday celebration. It was one of the best attended. The weather was cooperative. The bands were great. The Campbell High School team did a great job again. And it was a fun celebration. It just so happened to be my birthday, too. So thank you for the fireworks at the end of my day. Thank you.
We hope you have 80 more good years. Mr. Doug Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing in the sense of report, but I do want to commend one of our employees, one of our staffers, concerning a constituent service issue I had. A very frustrated resident, and it's Christiana Craddock, who's our assistant to, to our city administrator. And I won't get into details of what it is, but I got an email literally while I was sitting here from the constituent. I just want to share this is that, this is from Mr. Greg Fellows, lives over in Kingsview, in one of the new homes that was just recently built. And his wife, he says, "Sue and I are so impressed with this, with Christina, Christiana and the Smyrna approach. They were looking forward to being part of the community for several years." And just wanted to say that she had gone above and beyond to help to get this resolved, and she has her, his sincerest gratitude. So I just want to make that comment. And also, another new resident to the city of Smyrna who's very happy to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Susan Wilkens.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just make a couple of comments for everyone that came to the fireworks concert and Smyrna birthday celebration. It was a great success. It was very hot, but a lot of fun. And I've had a lot of positive comments from citizens about how much they enjoyed it. So I've just wanted to make mention of that and how hard the staff worked to make that happen and thank them for that. Also, I just want to comment on the retirement of Patty Wilson, who retired from the Smyrna Senior Center, Senior Aileen Wolf Center. And also, the dedication of the walking trail, which is very nice, is dedicated to Patty Wilson. It's a very nice amendment to the senior center. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, I want to give a big pat on the back to our Parks and Recreation. After the fireworks and the birthday celebration, I came through about, I guess, 2:00. I guess, 2:00 Sunday afternoon, and downtown was, it was virtually spotless. They had picked up every piece of trash there could be, and I know when the people left that night, it had to be a mess. So those guys did a great job, and if you see them, pat them on the back and give them a congratulations on doing that, because it's hard work and, you know, sometimes thankless. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chair Nolowicz.
Thank you. It was a spectacular birthday celebration. We commemorated the 25th anniversary of the dedication of the library and the community center. It was a great evening. It was hot, but that's okay. It was also, there was a nice breeze, and there were plenty of cold drinks and popsicles. I just wanted to comment again real quickly that we had, you know, we had two rezonings tonight for Ward 3. They were both RAD conditional. Again, you, you know, we heard a lot about that kind of zoning earlier in the year and last year, and I think this goes to show that there, you know, the beauty of that zoning category is that each one is considered individually. And we have two great projects now. They're going to be coming online in Ward 3. They have the support of the community. They are going to be beneficial to the community, and I was happy to be able to support those tonight. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I just wanted to tell Ms. Amy back there in the corner, thank you very much for all the, while you've contributed to the city of Smyrna, and wish you very well in your new job. With that, I yield.
Mr. Derek Norton.
I'll echo Councilwoman Bluestein's comments. Amy, we're going to miss you. You know, I know you're heading to DeKalb County. I don't know, I questioned that decision a little bit, but we're going to miss you. Thanks for doing such a good job. I also want to say that the presentation to Chief Lee earlier tonight, he is so deserving of that, and I want to thank him for his leadership and really for what all the officers do for us every day. I get emails from, forwarded to me as Public Safety Chair, and I think the rest of the council does, too, of, from constituents who are helped every day in such a professional manner. We got a police force that's second to none. Even at the Smyrna birthday celebration, everybody's talking about, you know, they were there. You didn't see some of the things that they were doing to protect us, but they're pretty awesome, and I'm glad to have each and every one of them. And also, I see Ann Kirk sitting in the back. They keep Smyrna Beautiful, had a big part of making sure everything was cleaned up after that, too. So thanks for all you do. With that, I yield.
Mr. Mike Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't normally make a report. Andrea got to my thunder before I was able to. But I'll tell you, Amy Snyder came to us as a government management fellow from Syracuse University. She was selected by our assistant city administrator, who has an uncanny ability to find talent, and hats off to Tammy for her ability to do that. But she really found a gem in Amy, and I don't know, I can't even put a number to the number of things that I have tasked Amy with since I met her a little over a year ago, but she's come through. And when she come to tell me that she was leaving, I had to compose myself after she left. She has been a godsend to Smyrna. She's behind the scenes, and it's rare that the citizens get to see the work that she does, but she is an incredible asset to the city of Smyrna, and she will be sorely, sorely missed. And I'm very jealous of DeKalb County, and if there's anybody on the DeKalb County Commission that happens to watch this meeting, you better treat her right. We'll send that police department down there and bring her back. Amy, thank you so much. You are obviously very well-appreciated here. I know you know that, but we miss you. Great, wish you much, much success. And what the government management fellow position is about is it trains folks that transition from their master's degree into a role where they can eventually become a city manager or county manager. And Amy, you are well on your way, and we will take great interest in following your career from this point forward.
Should have hired her. You had a year to hire. Nobody's fault but your own.
I make a motion that we...
Did a great job. Scott Cochran, City Attorney. Terry Graham, our city clerk, anything? Just, and I hope, I'm sure we mentioned Jennifer Bennett and Community Development and her staff, because they were sort of headed up the whole birthday celebration.
We had, Public Works was, had a heavy presence, Parks and Rec, Ann's group, with Keith Smyrna Beautiful was present. Jennifer Bennett was there. Amy worked that night. There was a huge staff present to make all that work, and I didn't do a thing except come and enjoy it.
Public Safety was...
Public Safety. We had the fire department was present. I mean, it was, it was an incredible number of folks working that night to make sure all of our residents had a wonderful time. And it was my very first Smyrna birthday celebration, but it certainly won't be my last.
I need to apologize for leaving all those people out. Thank you very much.
You wait until you see the overtime. Okay. Show calls hearing, we have none, or do not have a show calls hearing. Citizens' input, we've got a couple of folks that have signed up. Alec Bakri, 3459. Shawnee Trail
Mayor, in the last council meeting, I asked you if, since I have some questions on the Reid home, that, who I could meet with for 15, 20 minutes and get some questions answered, and you recommended the city manager. I have called him on a couple occasions, including last Monday. I have not received one call back on when in the future he might have 15, 20 minutes, and I'm asking tonight if you could recommend someone else on the council that may have the time, 15, 20 minutes, that I can speak to and have my questions answered.
The administrator.
Well, I can't go in speculation. I haven't had a courtesy call in two weeks, and if he's obviously busy, I'd like to suggest that someone else that was here when you did the vote, he wasn't here.
But, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for not being present for you during that.
I haven't...
You've gotten phone calls back, so it's very clear.
I left you a message last Monday saying, "I'm very flexible." All week I waited for a call. That, to me, is reasonable, and if I haven't heard anything, then I have to ask again tonight. When, if you can't do it, ask someone else that I can answer. I would like the answers. I believe in open government. Whenever you have questions, every answers, every question should be answered, no matter what. There's no middle ground. And if I can't get the time with you, I'd like you to recommend someone else that knows the answers to my questions, and I will take 15 minutes of the, 20 minutes of their time to get the answers that I require.
I'd be happy to meet with you. We talked after the last meeting, and I've been...
Very briefly, and it was vague, and then you said, "Send an email." I want a person-to-person meeting, and then do it. But I haven't heard anything all last week, and I believe in follow-up.
Okay. I'd be happy to, I'd be, I have no problem meeting with you. I'm sorry I couldn't meet your window of expectation in those two weeks, but you were, there was several phone calls that went out.
I'm very flexible. Do you feel next, this week, sometime I can hear from you, and you give me a date and time, and I'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Randy Jordan, 837 Wells Circle, Public Works, rain runoff. Guess what it says?
Thank you. This is my third Monday meeting, so you guys have maybe got used to my face by now. I am here because, like Alex before me, nobody answers our questions. Nobody returns our calls, our emails, don't even read our emails. Now, this is serious stuff. I have pictures like this for public records, pictures of the facility and the runoff. This is serious stuff, guys. And when we get a group of people that are unresponsive and I have to come three Mondays in a row, something's wrong. Something's wrong. So please, maybe it starts here and moves down to the staff because the city engineer won't call my, return my call. He promised he'd have an answer to us by a certain date. That was weeks ago. So I don't want to be one of these people up here hollering and shouting, but this is serious business to us. And I vote, and there's now three of us here, and maybe next there'll be 10 of us here. So please listen to us. You know, you serve us. And it feels like when I come down here and I see all these really neat things happening to Smyrna. And yet, I went to a variance hearing, and there was only opposition to it, and it almost seems like the deal was done behind closed doors and it was approved anyway. And we don't get this nice presentation that you have here. Some of the time, you guys are missing it, and I think you need to get the message that you work for us, and a little bit of respect would be helpful. It's nice to come down here and see all this great stuff, and it makes me proud to be a citizen of Smyrna, but it also is frustrating when my little bitty stuff that doesn't maybe mount to a hill of beans in your mind is important to me is ignored. Thank you. My number is 770-560-6243. My email is randy.jordan@charter.net. And if anybody watching tonight feels like I do, please contact me. If any of you have any questions or want to know my concerns, please contact me. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I understand, Mayor, but if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to address just a...
Well, not till we get through with the last comment, and you can say that.
Oh.
Cynthia Lawrence, 1350, Overlook Cove Southeast comments.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity. Pardon me. Ms. Bluestein, I'm so glad you asked the questions regarding the drive-through on Wendy's. That has been a really huge issue. It's going to continue to be a big issue because of the traffic that we have there, and I would like to believe that their resolution will actually do something concrete, but like you, I have a lot of concerns. We'll see. We'll keep our fingers crossed, and we'll see. I know that Mr. Norton is going to help us out with that if it becomes a problem. The other thing is, Mr. Norton, I would like for you to remind Chief Lee also, because school's in session now, you know, we have that problem in front of our Giles Elementary School where people get in a hurry at work times during the workdays, and we've got little children there that really need to be protected. And the last thing, I just wanted to invite all of you to coffee on Wednesday morning at Rev Coffee, just down the street here. We're going to have a really good time. Thank you, Ms. Terry and Ms. Andrea, for suggesting that we get in touch with Mr. Hill. Hunter Hill is going to be with us, and we're going to talk about fireworks. So I would cordially invite you to come and be with us Wednesday morning. We'd have coffee at Rev Coffee. So thank you all very much for your hard work. Have a great evening.
That was the last person that signed up for comments. Mr. Jones, did you have a comment that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I was going to get, talk to Randy just for a second, address the comments that he had. I understand that it is frustrating, and we could certainly do a better job on this issue of communicating back, but I didn't want you to get the sense that it'd been ignored, because it certainly hasn't. There's been work going on behind the scenes. There's about three different sources that's causing that problem, two of them that are identified. One of them appears to be crushed from years and years ago, and it's obvious that one of the catch bases has been washed about 50 yards downstream. But I'd be happy to include you in the internal, but I get that it's frustrating. I do, and you're right. It is a, it is a big problem, but I didn't want you to leave with the sense that it'd been ignored, because it certainly hadn't. Be happy to update you on where we stand at this point.
Okay. Those are the last comments. There's no other business brought for this body. I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 8:44.